Are you ready?
No.
The chair of the county town council, please rise.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg.
Yes.
Mr. France.
Here.
Mr. Caborty.
Here.
Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mrs. Ratten.
Here.
Mr. Song.
Here.
Mine here, Sarah Abson. At this time, whether any residents or property owners who wish to address the council, I will ask that you literature the comments for three minutes.
I don't think I ever ran over three minutes. Name is Larry Hopekis, twenty-sixth clear of Stone Gate. Fast review of the last three minutes, I went over the fact that we moved in here to have a nice peaceful quiet. They were heard where promised this by the owner. He gave us generous offer to eliminate fifty-five plus, which we refused. So he went to use other means. It was rejected twice and then he used the third time the removal of age restriction so he could get whatever he wanted and he succeeded so far. Before I go any further with the chairwoman's approval, I'd like to give you what I had previously given to the board members a while back ago, a summary taken from Garden Homes' webpage of what properties they own. Now on that, it's a pretty large company. First page, they have six thousand trail, uh, trail, uh, six thousand trailers. They have numerous apartment buildings and so forth and so on. Doesn't it, uh, and at the same time, the president, Richard Freeman, has been active in every activity concerned by homes here. Doesn't it seem a bit unusual with eighty homes compared to the six thousand that he's taken an unusual interest in this particular operation? I'm not going to elaborate on it. I expect to do it in, uh, in the future and I hope somebody reads it. It seems like we reward people who don't do their job. In the June thirteenth meeting, uh, public meeting, planning and zoning, we were not allowed to talk about any issues that was on the agenda, so we had to go and talk about some of them. But I just want to give you an example of how we, we approve and reward value. This is an ad of a competitor. This is their ad. Eighteen months, this is what they ran in the paper. The next year, this is what they ran in the paper. Can you see? That's really going to sell. No ad. So for two and a half years, they have not been advertising. So I don't know what they, they went to, uh, what their case was before the planning and zoning because it was all closed doors and it was all cloaking that as far as I'm concerned. We had no real input. We had one person who was an intervenor, but he also was, he also knew the people from past experience and so forth. So they never got, the PNC never got full appreciation of the homeowners that live there. In this move, in this administration where communications, open communications is supposed to be a prime thing, we're sort of lacking it. I would love to see, well, I, as you know, excuse me, I requested some information wise and so forth, which I gave a copy of last meeting and my chair, he said he will get a reply within next week or so, so I'm looking forward to that. But I think in all fairness, the residents of Stone Gate should have a meeting with the mayor and the chairman to explain the benefits of what has happened and I, I think it's only fair. With that, I leave you.
Thank you.
Okay. I realize this is informational.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there any committee commissioner board reports? Mr. Chair.
I've been talking with residents really.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You should have said, are there any other residents?
Hi, my chair, if I were to drive, I'm here tonight as secretary for the Legured Republican Town Committee and I just want to make the people watching on television, because I know you all know that Monday is the first of many events for the election cycle that ends in November of 2014. And those events are the town committee caucuses. Seven o'clock in this room, the Democratic Town Committee is meeting for their caucus to, to elect new members. It's the first election for the year, followed at seven thirty by the Republican Town Committee, which will be the second election for the year. I, I spend some time trying to keep track of comments on Facebook and correcting data when it's wrong and, and I notice a lot of people seem to be frustrated. You can end your frustration by participating in your government. It's, it's, uh, it's a representative form of government. Our town committees and commissions are blessed with a lot of good volunteers. There is always room for more. So I would invite anybody who is registered to vote as a Democrat or a Republican to show up on Monday at the appropriate time. And if you're not registered to vote as a Democrat or a Republican, the registrar's office is open tomorrow, Thursday. Thank you.
Mr. Cherry, does participation in government really end your frustration?
No. But, but what it does do, it gives you a chance to actually change the standards you're frustrated with instead of just rousing.
It gives you a chance to try.
We've been very successful.
You have to engage, don't you, Jeff? Okay, other resident or property owners. And committee commissioner board reports. Uh, we do have a liaison now from the Board of Education, that's maybe Llewellyn, but she could not be here this evening because they are also meeting this evening, the Board of Education is. Are there any comments from the town council this time? Start on the left, anybody?
To the right.
Wow, I was just going to mention that I attended the senior set of luncheon today and, um, boy, if you're sixty or over, it's the place to be on Wednesday afternoon. It's four bucks, best lunch I've had in a long time. Really a good, really a good, um, deal, nice company. Maybe why I served today was a great time.
I'll remember that in twenty years.
Lou, do you know that you're one of your tasks or, because of where you sit?
Did you get your load of foosharp in my outload?
Yes. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move, second.
Motion's made, seconded, and corrections, additions, rolls, and what you call the roll. Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Ratten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mine here, number zero opposed. Motion carries. Communications and referrals, I've just mentioned one, that was, we received a letter from the Board of Education, um, seeking the additional tuition from the BOAG, students' extra tuition, um, money that we received and I have referred that letter to the Finance Committee. Subcommittee reports. Administration, Mr. Eichelberg.
Administration committee met earlier this evening along with several appointments. We also discussed the lease agreement between the town of Legured and Mission Seabury and Lincoln Church. We discussed the resolution authorizing Legured representatives, the tri-town trail association to oversee and administer grants. We also discussed authorizing the mayor to decide, to sign the Connecticut Master Municipal Agreement for construction projects. And we discussed the resolution establishing administrator department head benefits and move those forward for the council's consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Allen? Finance Committee, Mr. France.
Finance Committee met earlier this evening and all the items we discussed here are on the agenda for, for the actual council.
Thank you. Any questions for finance? IT, Mr. Dombrowski.
IT met last night. We went through the, um, I asked directive report. One of the items that was, that was a meeting late last year between Land Use staff, MIS director, the mayor and myself regarding the use of the electronics for the permitting in the kiosk in the Land Use Department and realized that there was some additional training for staff that needed to take place with everything, the, uh, using the electronic media to get through all permitting process, so I knew it worked the way it was. Some of the things are still being handled by paper. And also, the other item that we really talked about was the, it was an item that was brought up, an actual item was brought up on the ITO portal with, related to history documents and some of the other supporting documentation. Try to see if there's a way we can segregate that out so that the main focus is the actual item on the agenda that we're looking at and then all the supporting document could be maybe segregated into a separate folder so that we feel less confusing on the agenda itself. The MIS director said she would work with Rox Davis if the ITO portal would support for that. And that's my report.
Any questions for IT? Mr. Dombrowski, Land Use's planning public works.
I reviewed updates for the Legured Town Center Committee. They discussed the next application for the steep grant. And I also had the discussion that was brought up by Mr. Comster-Song's bold idea about possibly construction of a new middle school with the Compton Lake system location. So there was a brief discussion about that at the Town Center Committee. There was also some discussion on the Clark Farm property. Comster Allen spoke for the solar energy company that is working, currently working in East Line and that they would like to speak to the committee about the potential of using some sort of solar energy facility up at the Clark Farm. So just to, we'll start the discussion there. There's a possible long-term use of the property. Order forty-five, there was some discussion about that with, between the resident and we had referred that we had received comments back from Steve Mazel, what's he tested changes and that planning and zoning is currently working with Land Use to update that, uh, the ordinance. We also discussed several idle items that came through for the, on our agenda tonight since it's a lease from Galesbury Landing. We had a presentation in support, which is another item that's on our action for the, with the Ratten Open Space Association, with the procurement of the Allen Avery Farm on Maintown Road. And then we also discussed the school, uh, the idea of a middle school at the current location of the Compton Lake Middle, uh, Center School and we decided we would like to forward that to the permanent municipal and that's my report.
Any questions for Land Use? Okay, um, if you're going to forward that, I'll help you out, Mr. France, because you're the liaison there. We forward that idea.
Do you have an agenda item to vote?
Because right now, that idea does, pardon me?
To, if we're going to give directive tasking, specific tasking as opposed to the general tasking that they have to look at a new school as part of the process of renovating this new, if we're going to give them a specific direction of where, we need to change what the direction they have.
Okay, because what we voted on, um, previously, that idea would not fit into the direction we've previously given them. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so if you were considering asking us to do that, you couldn't end the agenda or you could do it at the next meeting. However.
I would recommend doing it at the next meeting so we'll get a clearer motion.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions for Land Use? Permanent municipal building committee, Mr. France.
Building committee met on Monday evening to start off talking about the police facility project. A lot of discussion related to the site plan and getting that reviewed by the building committee. The architect stated they had, they're going to incorporate all the comments to date and bring a final draft of that site plan to their next meeting in two weeks for review by the building committee. There was discussion concerning whether there was sufficient parking in the site plan design. As part of the original study that was done, parking was addressed and the rationale for it, but there was a, so significant discussion on whether that was sufficient, what the numbers were based on, so we're going to take a look at that. They have a special meeting scheduled for two weeks, a week for Monday, on the twentieth. Also added a direction, one, as the mayor is going to look at combining the two properties into one, there's no reason for building, the building committee doesn't need to do that correction. They both have their own properties, but they need, do need to be combined as part of this project, so he can do that now. In addition to, uh, the contact, Mr. Garrett, regarding the fire and hazard inspection of the existing, um, fire station. Last major discussion was regarding the radio tower, salvaging the existing one and moving it versus building new and what we require for that. Then they went into the Board of Education project for the schools. Mr. John Ireland, who's the architect, performed a study, had several questions related to his material assessment. There was discussion about Sam Cepatrick, has the updated work, what we've done over the last several years in the asbestos debate, and we provide that to the architect. And also talked about the planet conservation development, referenced a study concerning the Legured Center Design District, he didn't have the commissioner, we need to provide that to him. There was also discussion, there was, there has been discussion about the emergency shelter as part of the middle school, whether it was a, a desire, a need, or somewhere in between, what to give direction to and how to incorporate that into the study. The building committee's going to provide that direction. He also raised the new security commission report that we recently released as part of the Sandy Hook, uh, study. And that will, it goes into effect the first of July, so it will affect this project, he will incorporate that into the study. He also asked about his dual use, if you will, Parks and Rec's desires or desires for Parks and Rec, of what they would like to see as part of the buildings, maybe do a renovation as, as an input. The bulk of the remainder, the major discussion was on a demographic study, which is in progress. Dr. Proud, who did the last one, is doing the next one, so we have some discussion on what the need was and why you need to do that. The next meeting, he plans to bring four plans, a program proposal based on the current progress study, it'll be updated once the new study is done. And then they're going to do a walkthrough, it's going to be a white paper, a study paper on a walkthrough, and then explore some options related to magnesium catheter, oratory, and those kinds of major space desires and. And the only other, the other item was that they elected a new chairman, Steve Juszkiewicz is the new chair of the building committee and Pete McIntyre, who's been the chair, has stayed on as the vice chair.
Any questions for permanent municipal building committee liaison? Uh, Mr. France, pension board liaison.
Pension board is not met since our last meeting.
We have some good news for you tonight.
Yes, a full, a full pension board, this is him.
Board of Education liaison, Mr. Caborty.
Yes, thank you. Before I begin, let me just say it was a particularly lengthy meeting and there was a lot of detail and I kept working to try to simplify and state things as simply and quickly as possible. I'm not sure how successful it was and a number of the details, I'm, I'm going to read more than I would normally because I don't want to misrepresent, so. First of all, Mr. Bunicor, the AED reported on a very successful fall support season. He mentioned that volleyball team won the ECC and Michelle Klinickowski was named the area player of the year in volleyball for the day and Jordan Kowalski was the day's area player of the year in football. They also mentioned that Ty Eden, uh, high school quarterback, set new high school and conference records for passing and in boys cross country, Bryce Eden was named to the All-State team as well. Uh, school attendance at all levels continues at about ninety-five percent and after-school activities, participation is high and growing at both the middle and high schools. Athletic participation alone was thirty-five percent in the fall and with good male and female balance, it continues to outpace state and national averages. And also, after hearing our carolers sing in New York City over the break, the Gap Corporation has asked our students to perform at their Christmas party next year, the corporate Christmas party next year.
Wow.
So I'm sure they're all hoping for goodie bags as they. The Finance Committee reported that serious issues remain with the education budget for the current fiscal year. Twenty-five percent of funds have been held back by the board since the start of the school year with contracted payroll increases, magnet school tuition, and special education costs being among the most significant reasons for that. Regarding the last, state reimbursement for excess costs in this, in part deals with a question that came up last time. For excess costs, where was I? Has dropped in recent years from one hundred percent to seventy-three percent and this is, uh, part of the reason for last year having a shortfall of two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in that account. Uh, the board has no budget contingency fund for this and as a consequence of this and other costs, they believe to be outside of their control. The board finance committee believes that a zero percent increase for next year is unrealistic. The committee suggested that a one point four million dollar increase would be necessary just to break even. Related comments were included during the discussion of the recently received budget directive letter and I realize I probably should have, because most of what was spoken about was not about the letter per se, it was about the accompanying information, so I want to, I want to clarify that. Objections were raised to certain of the letter's numbers, especially what board members believed were overstated teacher salary increases and understated town union increases. The finance chair expressed his intention to seek clarification on this issue. It was also reported that the BOE budget will be ready to present to the council at the end of February. All budget items are now frozen, allowing only essential item purchases with approval of the superintendent. It was noted that the one hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase in the agri-science operating grant has not yet been allocated to the agri-science program. The board accepted as complete the LHS asbestos paper project and approved next year's regional school calendar. In addition, they will apply for a state technology grant to continue to support the media track live streaming at a cost of about twenty-four hundred dollars a year. Uh, the board voted to fill the projected hundred and sixteen thousand dollar current budget deficit from this fiscal year by moving just over seventy-four thousand dollars from paraprofessional salaries and additional funds from literacy tutors, district professional development, and a teacher quality grant. Most of these funds were removed, were moved to meet the deficit in special education tuition, non-public. It was noted that most paraprofessionals would lose a half an hour per day and that only four paraprofessionals would work more than twenty-nine hours per week. The board also voted to request from the town eighty-six thousand, six seventy-two to cover eighty-five thousand dollars for magnet school tuition and the rest for costs related to the town's internal allot. And a final note, another follow-up question from last meeting about what numbers get reported if they included, and according to the central office, the number of enrolled students of which the BOE gives to the council do not include Legured students attending magnet schools, tech schools, et cetera. However, it, it was unclear as to whether or not the state, when the state calculates per pupil expenditure and it's not clear whether that number includes money spent on, on out-of-town tuition.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Caborty?
I'd like to just have clarification, just additional information. I did provide additional, the, the question, or the issue was the graph that was in the letter. I did provide additional information to the chairman of the Board of Education for the consideration. She responded back to have a joint meeting, which is still yet to be scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. When a student goes to the magnet school, are they considered enrolled in Legured or are they enrolled in magnet school?
The question is, who's doing the consideration? When, when our town provides numbers of kids enrolled, they do not include, they, they include only children who are actually attending schools within the town of Leonard. But again, you know, state numbers for their calculations might be different. Central office wasn't entirely clear on Monday. If that's something we'd like to discover, I'd have to pursue that.
So Councilor Caborty, the paraprofessionals, are they the ones that work with the special ed kids?
By and large. They, they serve some other purposes, but the majority are, are special.
Are the numbers being reduced or are the hours just being cut back? I could ask over that part.
I don't, there was a lot of detail. I, I believe that it was a reduction in hours. The half hour and the, some were cut back to over twenty-nine hours. Probably something like thirty-five hours in some cases were cut back to twenty-nine. There are four parish who continue to go over twenty-nine. That's almost certainly related to the fact that in the individual education plan, the special ed plan for the student, which is a legal document, would have designated that as a necessity, so the school wouldn't have any flexibility on that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We met with, the mayor and I met with Kathy Patterson and the new chair of the board, Julia, and one of the questions that did come up, which is sort of on that same subject, magnet schools, there's a number of different type magnet schools, I guess we'll call it. And the question I ask is how many, which ones are we required to provide transportation? Because you don't, you're not required to provide transportation for all of them, but yet we are providing transportation for all of them. So with all of these financial concerns, they are going to definitely look into which ones we are not required to provide transportation for. Let's see, any other liaison reports?
Is there a PCA?
It's still, it's not on there.
Yeah.
Did I just skip that other section, Albert? Oh, that's right, it's not on my cheat sheet.
You gotta go electronic.
I know. I really do, I really do.
You should have my sheet before.
I was, but you know what, ever since that night, the whole system went down and I'm the only one that had an agenda I just sort of rely on.
I have a notepad.
Go ahead, WPCA.
Now, Reese, we haven't met. But a good IT person knows to have papers.
I, I'm liaison to Parks and Recs and their meeting in December was canceled. So I did go in and talk to Mr. Greasy about our concerns that last year they only met four times out of twelve and I asked him if, if part of the problem was inability to get a quorum, that they need, he needs to let us know so that we can fix that, because we can fix that. And so he said to give him a couple of months and he'll get back to me, so, but I did express my concern about lack of meetings. Report the mayor.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. As far as last week's storm goes and some storms before that, I think we've come through them fairly well, with good support from our public works and emergency services. As I rode around town on Friday morning, I was able to observe public works crews and our police on the job despite the weather. What really helped was the pre-staging of our emergency services, the staffing of the firehouses the night before as they saw the storm coming and also moving one of our ambulances down to Gales Ferry. Sunday, you know, by contrast, Sunday mornings, conditions looked great and, you know, when you, when you left early in the morning, but it turned out that we had a bit of an instant freeze up on, you know, late Friday morning, uh, late Sunday morning and, you know, that was, that was problematic. As you can imagine, by the time we bring our crews in and get the salt down on the road, it was a problem. road, it was a problem. And it's difficult to anticipate these problems under changing weather conditions, especially, you know, the icing of the roads. And also, it's financially and manpower prohibitive. When you think of it, you have people who are working through, we bring them in on Sunday, minimum a four-hour shift, you know, for the crew at double time. It's very difficult to do. So again, we're never going to be satisfied, we're always looking to make some improvements. I was pleased with the feedback we got from our citizens. I just had someone stop in my office today to talk about some of the issues we've had on some roads. The new emergency management director, Russell Shaw, worked out very well during the storm. He kind of got thrown into it right on his first day on the job. And I appreciate his coordination of, especially emergency services before and during the storm and his continuous updates. The police facility, my assistant, Mark Bancroft, is coordinating the preparation for the demolition of these buildings, which we've been using for many years as storage. You know, we're going through literally thirty, over thirty years worth of documents that have been just sitting in some of these buildings, trying to scan the ones we need, you know, just get rid of others. We're doing the same type of thing in the town hall, just getting our staff to start, you know, touching, you know, I tell them, you've got to touch every document and every drawer to see if you really need and what you really need. We're making contingency plans now for parking and for building access due to site work. Last week, or the week before, we were digging test pits here on the property and drilling some, doing some borings on the property. And we're also looking for rearrangement of some of the offices in the town hall to accommodate the town engineer who's going to be displaced when the ambulance build in is demolished. I attended a meeting yesterday morning at the COG. It was a meeting with state legislators, and this was all of the state legislators who were invited, their representative towns. In total, we had twelve, a combination of senators and representatives there, which was a really good showing when you think that, you know, in our entire legislature, there's about a hundred and eighty members, so, and not all of them were there. So it was a good turnout. The issues really come down to, and I believe I sent you the sheet of the seven items that were highlighted by the COG. And it's, you know, the MBR and the minimum budget requirement for Board of Ed got a lot of attention from many of the towns in terms of the restrictions on being able to formulate budgets, knowing that you have mandatory spending levels. It got some very good attention. And the recommendation there was really that we ought to back off CCM's recommendation of eliminating the MBR, because we know that's not going to fly, and be more positive and say, look, we want to be able to make changes to our MBR based on certain conditions. You know, reduction in administrative staff, reduce the school population, which again is somewhat accounted for now, combining school buildings. So they're looking for ideas, and, but I think we got very good support on that. Another issue is like the car tax. Public notices in the newspaper, you know, gets a little bit of attention, but everybody's, you know, very leery of antagonizing people by ink, by the barrel. And that seems to be the issue there, as the press has taken, the newspapers have taken a very strong stance on that. And, you know, I brought up the example that, you know, they said, and you know, it's really not going to reduce your mill rate if you do that, but the point I brought up is, okay, leder spends about thirty thousand dollars, maybe more than that if you include WPCA. I said, but if you gave me that thirty thousand dollars, what I could do is I could put more money into technology. I brought up the clerk's office, you know, things like dog licenses online and things like that, which could really help to get information out to people and make their lives a little bit easier. So again, that one got, you know, got a little bit of attention, but it's a little bit sensitive. And again, you should understand that it does not eliminate public notices in the paper, but it allows you to just say, you know, we're having this public hearing, if you want more information, you know, the documents are available here or in the clerk's office. Similarly, shortly, you're going to see us publishing all of the assessments for Algen Heights. You know, that's going to be several thousand dollars for that. And then we have to post it again in March, when the final assessments come out. But besides relief from some mandates, I think we need to be concerned about new mandates and some of the subtle things. And I would throw this out to you if you have contact with your state representatives to let them know, you know, recently there was an article about the minimum wage and talking about that. But, you know, there was someone in there that proposed that Connecticut should have a living wage or minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour. It's like, okay, that's great. Now personally, I think we ought to just make the minimum wage thirty dollars an hour, and then be done with it, because now everybody will be making enough money and we won't have to deal with it again. But if you think of it, at fifteen dollars an hour, we have many full-time employees in our town that make less than that. And a lot of our employees that make just more than that. If you raise the minimum wage and everyone, you know, all the paraprofessionals, everyone's making fifteen dollars an hour, well, you can imagine the next union negotiation is going to be very, very interesting. So, you know, there's some of these subtle things that seem to sneak in, and we don't recognize the impact of some of these ideas. And that's my report.
Any questions for the mayor? Start on the right, to the left. No questions. Thank you. Any old business? Under new business, anybody like to amend the agenda this time? Admin, agenda item number one.
I will move to appoint Shane Skinner, unaffiliated of 225 Averyville Road, ledger to the Ledger Town Center Committee, as a member from the community at large for a term ending February eleventh, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
I'd like to note that we have a, he's going to get just over a month. And the reason for that is because of the limited duration of the Ledger Town Center Committee's charter. So as a body, we need to look at extending that if they so choose. If they decide they want to continue to extend, we're going to need to look at that.
Any questions? Roxanne.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Nine in favor, please.
Motion carries, item number two.
I'll move to appoint Sharon Medecky, Democrat of forty-four Fanning Road, Ledger, to the pension board for a three-year term to expire on January twentieth, two thousand seventeen, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to just note that Sharon has a lot of expertise in this. We are very happy that she's been, that she's decided that she's willing to serve on this board. And I thank Mr. Prescott Thompson for his many years of service. And just, this is an important board, and we're glad that Sharon has been willing to step up.
Very good. You went up. Very good news. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Nine in favor, please.
Motion carries, item number three.
So I'll move to appoint Susan Jones, unaffiliated of Seven Queen Eleanor Drive, Galesbury, to the pension board for a three-year term to expire on January twentieth, two thousand sixteen. That should be a two-year term to expire on January twentieth, two thousand sixteen, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, it is a three-year term. She is, she is filling in, she's going to be a ton of two years of three-year term. I'm on, please.
Mr. Marshall.
Counselor Allen.
Motion made. Second, is there any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, please.
Motion carries, item number five.
I'll move to adopt the proposed resolution authorizing Ledger's representatives to Tri-Town Trail Association to oversee and administer grant monies received from the state or federal government by the town of Ledger for the Bluff Point Creston Tri-Town Trail Initiative, as contained in the draft dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Any favor, please?
Motion carries, item number three.
So I'll move to appoint Susan Jones, unaffiliated of Seven Queen Eleanor Drive, Galesbury, to the pension board for a three-year term to expire on January twentieth, two thousand sixteen. That should be a two-year term to expire on January twentieth, two thousand sixteen, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, it is a three-year term. She is, she is filling in, she's going to be a ton of two years of three-year term. I'm on, please.
Mr. Marshall.
Counselor Allen.
Motion made. Second, is there any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Any favor, please?
Motion carries, finance, item number six.
Make a motion to appropriate and transfer surety bond funds for permit number one-three-zero-zero in the amount of one thousand dollars to TARP account two-zero-five-four-zero-one-zero-seven five-six-three-two-five.
Second. Discussion.
This is a permit that was let about seven and a half years ago, and the driveway was not, the apron on town property was not completed at that time. Practice wasn't time to have a contractor post a thousand-dollar surety bond. And that contractor's since gone out of business, and so the town will take responsibility to do that, so the money for that will be transferred to the town aid road account in the XQ.
Any further discussion, questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboury?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, please?
Motion carries, item number seven.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a proposed lease agreement between the town of Ledger and Bishop Seabury-Hangrethan Church, as contained in the draft dated December twenty-three, two thousand thirteen, to lease space to the Galesbury Land.
Second.
On discussion?
First, in full disclosure, on number of Bishop Seabury-Hangrethan Church, I'll be abstaining from the vote. We held a public hearing to take public comment. Presentation was made by Mark Bancroft, mayor's assistant, on the project to lease four classrooms plus make use of the auditorium for Sunday services as part of the lease agreement.
Any questions, corrections, changes, suggestions?
When we reviewed this letter of land use, the lease document, the land use, it also did an email that was received by resident Eric Treister with comments and suggestions to the Galesbury Land lease. And I've also heard through several admins, finance, and land use all, again, quickly, but actually, they quickly looked thoroughly at Mr. Treister's comments, wrote this lease. And there were some comments that had come forward. I'd like to go through some of these items that I've been discussing, discussing land use, some stuff that I've heard from admin. I'm not sure if finance had anything to comment as well. Some of the comments that were made that came out of admin is the fact that on the lease location, it lists the four rooms that they're proposing the leases to show, but it does not discuss the fact that they're going to be using the gymnasium on Sundays as a scheduled use. So I would like to add on section three of the lease, so we'll be just adding to the end of the last line, the address units, there'll be an scheduled use of gymnasium on Sundays. Item number four of the lease agreement, the comment that came from Mr. Treister, but underlining the numbers purely editorial, so I prefer that.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Yep.
I would suggest that you don't use on Sundays just scheduled use of the gymnasium, as they may, they may desire to have a service at some other point.
Okay.
Actually, I would recommend that you, Sunday services, you have to coordinate, because there are other people that are using that facility, Jager's side uses that same building or same room.
Okay.
So I would designate the time that they have exclusive use to it, which might be seven to noon on Sunday. And then, other than coordinate that with landlord on all the other uses.
I think that the words...
Scheduled use of gymnasium.
I think scheduled would cover, they know they have to schedule, rather than to get, to take into your consideration, it could be a service during the week, holy week or whatever.
We understand who it has to be scheduled with.
Right. Scheduled use of gymnasium. If I could, could you just, you called gymnasium, but I would, yeah, three, one, this is... Okay.
I think that the words-
Scheduled, scheduled use of gymnasium.
I think scheduled would cover, they know they have to schedule rather than to get, to take into your consideration, it could be a service during the week, holy week or whatever.
We understand who it has to be scheduled with.
Right. Scheduled use of gymnasium. If I could, could you just, you called gymnasium, but I would put that to 31. Okay.
And that would be scheduled through the mayor's assistant?
Or designated to, against the mayor's assistants' help?
The next item that I've considered from Mr. Treister's comments with paragraph number 14, currently states, in any, I have sections 14 subsection C, in any case, in case any service on the land was controlled, is interrupted, landlord should repair as soon as possible. Mr. Treister's comments should be timed, should be changed from as soon as possible to in a timely manner, I'm not sure if that really matters.
Fair.
So.
So, that's fine, timely manner is fine.
Paragraph number 16, currently reads as subletting and assignment, tenants shall not sublet or assign this lease or any portion thereof without landlord prior written consent, which shall not be unreasonably withheld. Mr. Treister's comments were to not allow subletting at all. My recommendation is just to strike the last line of that paragraph. So, it would simply read, subletting and assignment, tenants shall not sublet or assign this lease or any portion thereof without the landlord's prior written consent, period.
I'm on offense on that one. As far as not allowing it will precisely change.
Unreasonably withheld, I mean, that clause is used all the time and this was a clause that the town's attorney specifically placed in the lease. So, I think when we take out things like that, we're undoing his legal language. I don't know that we want to cross that line. I personally think that one's all right and I think, which shall not be unreasonably withheld, is used very commonly.
I would agree with that, with that, with Councilor Allen. I've seen it in contracts I've worked on and if the attorney suggested we put it in, I think that's a good place.
There is consensus, the leader has written.
Can we not just say, shall not sublet?
That's an alternative.
That's an alternative.
Yeah, that is, that is a clear alternative, is to just say, there is no subletting.
I don't believe that there's any intent to sublet, having read through the lease and so.
I mean, Mr. Treister doesn't make a lot of comment about that, you know, somebody shouldn't be subletting the property to make a profit off the town property. That's fits the law.
That's a good point. So, I would suggest that we should just say, shall not sublet.
Subletting doesn't necessarily turn profit.
Somebody also doesn't, doesn't, it may also be just alter use of another organization under the umbrella of Bishop Seabury-Hangreken Church. For instance, a nonprofit service that isn't providing revenue to the church, but is going to make use of the space when we're not using it. As opposed to having to have a separate lease and then try and figure out how to juggle that space along with everything else as a shared space without subletting, but it does, we do need to make sure that there's not profit being made. I agree with their, Mr. Treister's comment. But, there could be a case where another nonprofit needs an office space on a day that the church is not using a particular room, as an example. I'm not strongly one way or the other, but I'm just presenting there can be.
I'm not sure that would be considered subletting.
It is, if they're not part of Bishop Seabury-Hangreken Church, they're another organization. The church has no authority to let them use the space.
Chair, chairman, I just have a question on the board because I don't think it's talking about unreasonably withholding subletting. It's saying, first of all, you can't do it without the landlord's prior consent. And I think that's what you mean to say, that's what they're referring to, is that shall not be unreasonably withheld. In other words, they come to you, I can't say, well, come back in six months. But, we certainly have the right to say no.
Correct.
So, that, so that, it's in there that we can say no.
You're right, and the prior written consent is what the unreasonably withheld is referring to.
So, we're all fine with that?
Consent is to leave it as, as it is.
Yes.
It's fine. Okay. Paragraph 18, currently reads compliant with regulatory agencies, tenants shall comply, promptly comply with all ordinances, regulations required from all federal, state, and local governments regarding nuisances or other grievances connected with the lease premises during the tenant's tenancy. Mr. Treister points out that it could be doing something that would be illegal, that would not necessarily be a nuisance or grievance. So, my recommendation is to simply strike nuisances and or other grievances connected with the lease, so that it would be tenants promptly comply with all ordinances, regulations required from all federal, state, and local governments regarding the lease premises during the tenant's tenancy. Question, there was some discussion about this, hazardous material clause. Mr. Treister recommends that we add in for used, because right now it is still not stored on the premises. But, also we should look at what DEP, the DEEP and EPA considers hazardous material. Whiteout, super glue, some basic household cleaners are, have elements that could be considered hazardous material, if not promptly used. So, it's kind of a, I saw the value of adding not used, depending if you look at some, that I decided to store PCDs inside the facility, but it could also be true that certain normal household chemicals that we use on a day-to-day basis, if improperly used, are hazardous material as well. Most people don't realize that leather gloves, the tannic acid that it uses is considered a hazardous material. So, just having leather gloves on a property could be considered hazardous material, or just a lot to cope. So, I'm not sure which way to go on that, I just wanted to bring that, point that out.
Anybody have any strong feelings about changing that paragraph? No? Moving on.
I'm not taking that paragraph. Those are the only comments that I had, I'm not sure if any other council members asked for reading. Mr. Treister's comments and suggestions, have any other paragraphs or anything else that you, what your amendment does? Just everyone spelling up that correct paragraph. Well, well, the typo, which can alter, altering, not tenant alternations.
Any other comments? Yes.
So, I think that brings up the question of whether or not we as a body determine if these are substantial changes.
Oh, I don't-
I don't see any of the changes that we are recommending to be substantive, they're just mainly word smithing.
I agree, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
It would be as a body. I feel like it's correct.
Just changing the words to be a little more clearer in the lease document. And also the point of, that was made as well, is that this, these changes that we're making to this lease document are not necessarily limited to this one lease. This, these changes should be changed in the lease document that we have for the property and to be continued forward to any other future leases as well.
What is the status of the lease, with committee is that still?
The lease is, it was a land use, it went through, and this is it. This is what we had sent off to the town attorney for review and got back.
Okay.
So, it's gone through land use, we voted on approved, it forwarded to the town attorney to do the years of assistance, which it did. So, the writing of the new lease, this is the writing of the new lease document.
Okay, so when we approve this, because here, I, go ahead.
The one issue that isn't resolved yet, that is, what is the incubator term? And we had discussions about escalating lease, escalating the rents for traditional businesses. Now, I would say that the church is more like scarred as a tenant, as opposed to an incubator, a true incubator business. But, that issue has been resolved, is what's the incubator period? Because we're not deciding to put businesses in the school for-
Correct, and that was separate documents in the lease policy, of the policy document.
That was what we were worried about approving, was that document.
Correct, and we have, the, that, the that document has come from EDC drafted a policy document. It went to land use, land use made some minor changes. I thought I was going to send it back to EDC for comments from them again, but have decided that we should just forward that to admin.
Okay, good.
That was the lease that we, which was really the incubator business lease.
Right, so the policy document, that never existed before in any way, shape, or form. Just going through land use, we made some minor changes to what EDC had provided. And now, we're going to forward that over to admin from here.
Okay, so that clarifies where everything is in.
There's also another admin change on our numbering sequence after 36 needs to be corrected. You have 236, and no 30, it's 36, you become 37, where all these changes should be 37. And language rules relationships from 38, 39 are ways to say.
Okay, we covered the spelling of the.
Is spelled correctly.
Yeah, it's a lease.
It's just not, I'm trying to show the, like, outline.
I'd just like to note that with this new lease, looking at the different businesses and other occupants, Galesbury Landing is getting pretty close to 100% occupied. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but I'm looking at, you know, the different uses in there now and we're getting pretty close, which is a good thing.
Good fun.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
I'm staying.
Mr. Cárdenas?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Any favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, item number eight, under finance.
Make a motion to approve the town council department fiscal year 2014-2015 budget to be included in the general government's proposed budget.
Second.
Should make seconded discussion?
Brief, this is a zero increase budget for the town council department. The only outstanding question right now is the order clause we back out of the information bank. So, it might be a 3% increase in that one line, which is about $700.
And to clarify, this is not the town budget, it's just the town council's budget as a department of the town.
In my process, the town council has to approve it.
Which we will do in the next motion.
Yes. No, it's a SIP.
Oh, that's a SIP, that's right.
This is this one.
This is this one. Okay, any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, number nine.
Make a motion to approve the town council department capital improvement projects, SIP fiscal year 2014-2015 budget to be included in the general government's proposed budget.
Second.
Discussion?
The only line that we carry forward is the $1,500 annual SIP budget for laptops to the town council.
If they.
If they. If they.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cárdenas?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, moving on to land use, item number 10.
Motion to support the acquisition of 152 acres known as the Avery Farm, located on Landtown Road, extensive and led by the Grotton Open Space Association to be preserved in its natural state, accessible to the public for non-waterized passive recreation, perfect to-
Second.
Discussion?
Grotton Open Space Association was approached by the owners of the Avery Farm. I think the way that this works is that they have, they were giving over the part of the farm that it, in Grotton, to the, to the GOSA, and then they would be purchasing at market rate the property in Leger at a cost of $1.2 million. They were in the process of fundraising to, to split the funds to support, and grants to support procurement of that property. This is simply just a endorsement of GOSA for procuring the property so that they can apply to state programs.
And there's no financial commitment on it.
There is no financial commitment on this at all. There was some discussion last night at the land use committee meeting about the possibility of maybe the town of Leger had the good faith to support this further, look at using maybe some of our open space funding, part of the open space funding. Some not well-known, but to be discussed at later date, but we'll be discussing with the land use zoning commission and the conservation commission to see if we would be interested in donating some funding to support the procurement of this property.
And we had a presentation by GOSA about some other properties they purchased throughout their incredible organization. We would love to work with them on other properties in Leger. There was some interest expressed in GOSA becoming an organization that does more than just Grotton. They've got some beautiful properties, they've done a great job of open space, and hopefully more. So, great organization.
Further discussion?
Yeah, excuse me, continuing on that, they also had a con college professor come in with a report of the flora and fauna of the property and it's, it's an exceptional piece for, for people that are bird lovers and bird watchers and things like that. I mean, they identified numerous species on this property. So, it's, it's a great asset to have in town for people that are going to be into hiking and things like that. It's going to be a great asset.
And I think one of the comments that was made as far as that was concerned is that this was one of the most environmentally important properties in Southern Kentucky.
East Coast.
I mean, east coast, correct, as far as the wildlife and the fauna of the property.
Sort of be clear, we're not using town funds in this meeting, in this motion.
Nope.
We may consider it in the future, but the funds will be raised by Grotton Open Space Association. So, if Leger residents want to contribute to Grotton Open Space to buy this land, you should. It's a good investment.
Yes.
I'd just like to comment, I grew up on this piece of property. I know this property inside and out. I've ridden motorcycles all over it, bicycles, walked it.
Not anymore.
Not motorized. I know, I know, we used to get chased out of there anyway, but this, this really is a fabulous piece of property. Even, even some of the historical items, or I shouldn't say items, but historical artifacts that are on this property are amazing. I am just really happy to see that this is the only two little organizations going to protect and preserve it.
Very good.
One more really, I'm sorry, one more really quick comment, even though we state 152 acres, there's an equal size portion that's in Grotton that's contiguous to it, so it's about 300 acres.
So, they'll take the roll over as well?
No, 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 this has nothing to do with the property.
The beavers are still there.
Still there.
Still our problem.
Town is still old to see the growth.
Any further discussion?
But, the beavers actually live on the property.
So, be, be Grot's problem then?
Beavers.
Beavers is Grot's problem.
The robe, Grot, GOSA's.
Roxanne, would you call the roll for Kevin Silver now?
Mr. Cárdenas?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes.
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 Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, item number 11.
Make a motion to adopt certified resolution authorizing the submission of a pre-developed grant application under Housing for Economic Growth Program, as contained in the draft dated September 17, 2013.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion?
This is simply requesting a grant to continue, the planning is on the commission to continue work for the affordable housing initiative in overlay zones that it started working with. Continue that work and get, so that they have some funds to get through consultants so that they can further connect directly the affordable housing initiative that we already started.
Discussion?
So, I would like to comment, we discussed this at land use last night and I raised some concerns. I just want to put those concerns on the record. And I have assurances that this won't happen, but I want to put them on the record anyway. The town has paid for sewer studies many times over in the past and also soil studies for Leger Center. What we want to do is create or make it possible for families to, or for people to purchase housing that is built in Leger Center that will support Leger Center business. That means denser housing, it's so important, all the work has been done. But, if you're going to build more dense housing, you have to have sewer. We've already done the sewer study, so I want to make sure that when we hire a consultant using grant funds, that they don't start a new sewer study, that they refer to all of the work that has been done in the past specifically. Most, actually, I can't say most recently, it was 30 years ago, but we have a very detailed sewer study issued back around 1982, which Mr. Cherry knows about. I want to make sure on the record that if we move forward and hire these consultants, that they refer to previously existing productive sewer studies for the data, that we not allow them to suggest yet another sewer study. Those are my comments.
Thank you, any other comments? Yes.
I think we could just add to Councilor Song's comments just a little bit in that, unlike a lot of other studies, which are fairly static in this case, your soils, your underlying soils, stratas, don't really change.
Correct.
So, the information that we have gathered from these studies in the past is still accurate.
Any other discussion?
There is more to it, it's not just the sewer study.
Right.
As Chairman Mike explained last night, the real intent is to use town employees, town staff to do the bulk of this work, it's an ongoing process to kind of get held up. And part of that involves finding property where we actually could put a plan together to develop higher density housing.
Final comments, anybody? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cárdenas?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, entertain the motion to adjourn. Motion is ready, seconded. Meeting is adjourned without exception. And you may come up and we'll sign the papers. That's what they were waiting for.